We'll start the work session for Washington 2022. Looks like we have the council president. We're going to leave him down there, going over from the work session. So we have the minutes from February 22nd. We've got a regular session and the work session is our discussion items on the minutes. Eric, now. Presentations are least important. Presentation under the regular. I think we have a regular session on October 22nd. Six parcel donations. Go all day and have them. So the six parcel donations. That's all in there on record. I don't know if it's in the back. It's certainly from the state clerk community. And this is going to be remnant properties through. A little group that owns. So one of them is a lane drive. One of them is a duffin drive. Another one adjacent parcel, duffin drive. A small one on Mar-a-Rose. A small one on Mar-a-Rose. And a small one on Phillips Drive. Both these are really written in recent bounds description. For the most part, you could read them all day long and you wouldn't know where you are. Just to be honest. Most of you know your house as 6092 Navo Trail, but in reality, it is really listed more as a meets and bounds description. So in this case, they actually just find, give you an example. One is equivalent to lot 114 of the 12th district in lot 12 of Indians branch subdivision, or the court of Lake County, or to need AW builders. If anybody wants to read the NCD, some maps, I don't think we do. You do not. But I'll take away. If anybody wants to read them. So we will. And for those of you who've done this before, you know, these little remnant properties usually have a tendency to come back to hurt you. You know, nobody maintains them and they stay in what I'm calling no one's hands. You know, then we can't even really enter the property to take trees off and do something along those lines. So this is where we just simply take your possession of it. Any questions, comments? Yes, ma'am.
Once we take possession, we maintain the property as.
For the most part, they're just remnant pieces. It's usually the ones on the back, a duffin, for example. Any one that's down there kind of allows the real estate property up against the interstate. They're part of the park. There's a couple of little smaller in there, pieces that are in there. The adjacent property owner, which is Mr. Drum, for example, if you had an interest in it, I'm sure he'd be here or would be close by. So it's pretty much an apt example. I would just say that's shrubs and junk stuff. But if you have an interest in your mortgage, you can chase it and show exactly where it goes. So. Well, we got several and we're working on it. I know, you know, when you're in the back, you know, you got one on your street. But this is usually the one that caused us the most problems just last year. Remember, we had the tree on the back of Skylark Hill, Doug Court, which went back to Brooklyn and you had a huge pine tree that was a tag. And the question is, whose backyard is it? How to resolve it? And it actually turned out to be an island, a little small piece of property that nobody owned. A number of the property owners adjacent to it were more than happy to kind of use it if their backyard, little gardens and things like that. But in terms of it actually being an ownership issue, complicated. So we did take the tree down. That's the one that's not listed in there. But that's the one ultimately we need to get. And, you know, then you have to go to the adjacent property owners and see if somebody has an interest in it. But because further forward, the adjacent property owners are using the backyard, you know, by the time you do the survey, it's out there. We spent a lot of money trying to figure it out. So that was a little more complicated. These are just remnant pieces. And we got that through the land bank. And that's one of the reasons that the land bank was set up, so that we could do this. Any other questions, comments? Are you done?
What happened after the city accepted, uh, the whole land, the parcels?
You just simply add it to the properties you own that are different than your public right of ways, road systems. It's just identified as a piece. There's a lot of effort that went into basically acquiring.
And I just follow up with the comments instead of questions. In the future, that would be helpful for the council if those parcels have a copy of the map showing where it is located and the size of the parcel. Instead of giving the parcel number and the council chair to go to hunt for those information, it would be easier for the council to understand. A picture is rather the council will do. Like the mayor said earlier today, he can give us so many documents and information and it will help behind the stats, but the map to where map and parcel is inside of it would take us a better virtual concept of where it is and how it's located.
Any other questions, Thomas? All right, Eric, now. Approval of city manager's recommendation for Gordian to provide upgrades for the greenhouse in the amount of 89,227,300 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement and other related actions. This hopefully is the first series of being able to actually get these properties in place. And there you go.
This is a work order that was done by Kyle Guest and Jeff Moss back in December. It was completed on the 1st of January. It is through the state contractor, Gordian, who is one of the approved contractors from the state, so we don't need multiple bids on it. But it essentially does is get the Gordon house up to specs and primarily the largest expense on this would be the exhaust, the fire suppression systems, as well as the HVAC.
Tell us a little bit about Gordian, because in this particular case, most people want to know where he lives.
Okay. The Gordon house is the blue house out there that is currently.
Well, no, the contract.
The contract of Gordian? Okay. I thought you said the Gordon.
Oh, no.
Gordian is a, it's a state approved contractor, much like when they do the state approved contracts for vehicles and things that we order. So they go through a process. We also have the insurance, the WNI, and all the different requirements on the back of the.
And there are pre-three bid processes through the state, correct?
I'm sorry?
There are pre-three bidding processes through the state.
They're state approved contractors.
Questions?
So do we, do we have, you know, three bid, more than three bid for that project?
Well, they're state approved contractors, so it's like buying vehicles are on the state approved contractor bid list, so you don't require the three contracts on there.
So you just pick them, you know, whoever you are, then just pick whatever, you know, you feel like you pick?
Done the contractors, you mean?
Yeah.
This is one that the Moss and Guest went through with the state. So they, they're approved and they have parameters they have to operate in as far as the cost constraints and everything else and profit.
I understand that, but you know, I mean, in order to, to get a fair price, you should get multiple offers. So you, I mean, to me, that, that, I mean, it could be a fair price, it could be a higher price. Like, you know, we saw with the gas price last year, we took an offer for $200,000. And we came back and take another, you know, for some reason, and then we talk about it and we reconsider, right? Pick another contractor with a price of $93,000, less than half the price. And we've done a great job. I mean, why, why do we like to handpick any contractor that we want without, I understand they are approved, but there's many in the market, many of them out there. I mean, the hood, the 12-foot hood with the, the whole system, electrical, fire system, the hoods, more than $50,000. It's, it's like, to me, it's like more than double with the price in the market. I'm in the market, so I know. So I don't know. And I'm not ready to approve that.
I understand. The, the price on the binhead is 38,854.
But including the fire system, what I said, including fire system, electrical and the hood.
Correct. So what am I talking about?
Other comments?
I have a comment. We have so many projects that we have that's sitting waiting for council to make move on and do something about. Our citizens are waiting. They want to see now, they don't want to hear anymore that we talked about what we're going to do and what we're going to do. We have projects that have timelines, so we can sit and we can wait another three, six months to due process this. But this has already, we've already approved this, I mean, this is already there. We've asked the previous public works director, previous city manager to go and look into this, and they came back with this information. We as council members, we have department heads to do the work for the city. If we're going to undermine them, why are we here? What do we need them for? We're going to run the city and do their job. So my, my, my thought is that when we have department heads, they go and do the research and they bring this information to us.
Listen to me.
And if it's $5 difference.
$5, I got no problem with $5.
Five thousand dollars difference.
No, $5,000 is enough.
How long do we let the project certain way?
Okay, listen. The, we replaced the red group, I mean, red house group, how long ago? More than, more than half a year ago, almost a year ago, correct? We so hurry to get it done, to get it done before the insurance to come out to give an estimate that they determine they're going to pay for it or not. Why do we have to hurry to get it done before, even before the insurance come out and look at it and decide paying for it or not? Why we so hurry to pay for it before the insurance? We have insurance cover. And I asked multiple times, where are we at on that? Never have an answer from, you know, the city, okay? So those kind of practice, the termy that, they don't, don't, you know, I understand we just trust them, this and that, but we're here to more monitor things and make sure thing done properly. I am damn sure that Mr. Mayor, anybody here would spend your own money that way. But why would you like to waste the taxpayer money that way? That's why I'm not having money.
Other comments?
I'm not finished. 12 years ago, 12, 15 years ago, how, how much we invested all the time around? May I ask you?
You got the records just like I did.
Okay. Let, I mean, I could be wrong, but like 12 million dollars, say. And may you, you think you consider that was a good investment, a successful investment?
First, I think your first answer is incorrect. And the second answer would be, when you have a change in leadership, other people get to make other decisions. So it's very difficult to be accountable for decisions that you were not responsible for.
Okay.
You get paint, the inside of this room blue, somebody else can decide that, you know, maybe that's not their color choice. That's what you look for. When you come back in, you get to decide. A number of those properties, in terms of reasoning behind it and what was done to actually get them there, made a lot of sense back then. Still makes a lot of sense today. Quite literally does. But when you just do a blanket discussion, totally different. So if you're not asking the questions, that's very easy to make a statement for.
Okay. So years ago, you making investment that, you know, was done poorly. The, the all the structures are still on mud, it's still on, on any foundation. The, the building was built without fire sprinkler required by the state. Okay?
Let's just stop there for a second.
Okay?
Prove it.
Let, let me.
No, prove it. You just.
That's why I'm red.
You can read whatever you want.
Okay, that, that, that your response, okay?
To. Building under 5,000 square feet required by state law.
Most would not be, it depends on the occupancy.
Okay. Required or not?
Not now, no. Not by state.
Not by state. Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think what.
Excuse me. Ms. Fran. Ms. Fran, I'm not finished. 12, I mean, years ago, we waste millions of dollars. Let's put it that way and prove me wrong. I all, I've been saying that they're the city property. We know that we have to make it work some kind of way. It's not somebody else property. But we keep investing on it with our plan. What we're going to do with it? How we're going to make it back? How much money we roughly going to spend on it? The question been asked by this council in the past two years. Never respond. I mean, would you, it's just you out there making investment with millions of dollars without any plan? You don't care, you know, where the money going to go? How, I mean, put, let your lot put money in, into the ocean. I understand. The people wanted them getting done, but it got to be done the proper way. It's just, just can't pick anybody and any, but he go out and then everybody out there doing things done and with any kind of price done. It's just.
Other comments?
I am, I'm not ready to vote anything for this. I'm not ready to vote for anything for this project until we have a plan, the clear plan of what we're going to do with this building, how we're going to fix it, and then what our clear plan is. We throw money, last year we throw a bunch of money on red house, this year green house, nothing happening. We always in a hurry. We get 25 hour, 48 hour. For the man, I mean, for the, the council to, to, to look at things without, to, to, to digest any information to approve. I mean, why are, why, why are we that hurry? I don't believe that this city always have a day or two to determine, to, to, to make a decision on another thing. Why don't this council be share on information?
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Man?
Well, I have a question for the city manager. So where is the city law purchase policy in to place him?
Are you asking whether the city purchasing policy fits into this?
Yes.
This is a state approved contract, just like when we buy vehicles, they have to go through the, the requirements and the rigors of the state to get on the state contract. That's why it makes it a no bid through the state law.
And my council caller raised the concern that the fact is if the package, this package agenda includes, includes nine items for the council to make the decision to vote for tonight, will give it to the council a little bit more than 24 hours. It actually got here late yesterday afternoon, included all the contracts, included all the information. It doesn't give the council enough time to read through. And I'm going to ask my council fellow who did order within the agenda ideas to advise me what the warranty policy on the contract that we are about going tonight for 90,000 dollars. Could somebody give me that, right? What does the contract cover for the warranty for the 90,000 that we are about going to spend for tonight? Council, please help me out. Meanwhile, I don't see any response. So meanwhile, we have a council member to happen to be in the restaurant business and with his knowledge and experience, that he's saying that the price be higher. I hear the concern from council team that the city has a lot of project that we need to move fast. Move fast is different with moving with our understanding what it is.
Let me correct you.
The information.
Man, I didn't say move fast.
Council team.
I didn't say move fast.
Please let, let me finish.
I said move forward.
Please let me finish my question. We move forward. I agree with you 100%. But what type moving forward? Are we understanding what we moving forward for? Or we are just going to be if the council meeting have the agenda target given to us a little bit more than 24 hours before the meeting? Are we informed? Are we comfortable? Do we understand the need of the project to move forward? That's just my, um, my, my opinion, the way I see the practice. It doesn't put the council in the position to where we have a clear understanding what's going on, what's the law. We don't understand clearly what is in the contract. Just example, I asked few minutes ago on the warranty of the contract that we are proving for, I left no answer. So why are we keep having the same practice? And I have been raising the concern on the timing. For us, the council would love to support the items that being subjected by the city staff, but the cities also need to help the council to fulfill our job. Our job is not just being here to vote for whatever on the agenda. Our job is that we have to evaluate the information being given to us and then to make the judgment if this is the best interest for the city, then we'll go for it. Just like an example, in December, we voted for the commercial tax rate and the contract that the contract never been given to the council. I up until today, still have not been able to see the contract that the council voted for. This is not the practice that the taxpayer to give us the job we're supposed to do.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
You know, you can have good deal. It sounds good. Not everybody sitting at this table who's listening or anybody who's listening on that video really has the same information that we have. That's publicly available information and usually it's posted on the back and you're welcome to look at it. You can make an argument that it's not law法. Okay. I disagree. And I'll take it back. We have better information than you. The council has better information than you. You wouldn't know that, I just commented, unless somebody took the time to explain it. It'll take about three minutes and give you a chance to explain it. Then you can decide for yourself what makes sense. So unlike a normal contract or contract award, so let's just say a plumber, I hired Joe's plumber. You might go out and get three different bids from three different plumbing companies. Okay? The state of Georgia, to, to be able to do these contracts, sends out bids 40, not to one or two people or Joe's around the corner, the entire state of Georgia, everybody. And when you bid on things, the things that this council knows because they have it. You're welcome to come up and get one of these. This is just one of the pages. And it's going to identify the specific piece down to a bolt. It's going to tell you that the quantity is 288. The price is $3.07. The demolition is 21 cents. The factor is 1.946. And the total for that particular section is 1,166,41 cents. The reason it took so long, which was about 90 days, was because they took the entire scope of services, not just the vented, not just a sprinkler system, not just an air conditioning system, and they did an entire scope on the entire town. Every one of these items in here is what they bid on with the state. I didn't make that up. That's the state code. And there's page after page after page. That's the beauty of using a system, if you choose to use that system. Now, you can still go out and hire or get quotes from three plumbing companies if that's what you wanted to do. In this particular case, you know, somebody who's not sitting at this table decided to use this route. Paid staff, paid people. That's perfectly said. And you go, okay. That's their recommendation. So the project itself is relatively easy for us to say, but instead, you're welcome to it. So it's not totally fair to be able to just sit there and go, you don't have information. You got no passing information. You may or may not like the answer. You may or may want to play politics, but you go up and do that. But that's not totally accurate. The project itself only has two things that are really necessary to finish. An air conditioning system, simply because somebody stole it, and a vented because it was removed by the former players. That's it. At that point, you start voting. The bid is 89,227. You can try to confuse people if you wanted, or just like this, you're welcome to come up here, game on, cop. You can decide for yourself whether it's confusing. In the end, it's a political decision. Political decision says are we moving on this project till or not? If we don't move, then this 90 days worth of work gets shut out because it has a pipeline to it, just like any other contract. I would say this bid is good till Friday. After Friday, somebody might bid it out. Well, the price of gas is what up since last Friday. The price of materials is what up since last Friday. You can pick another series of people, maybe you get a little better, maybe you don't. Okay. But it's time to move on to projects. You, you're up, you have a multi-million dollar piece of property. So there was very good reasons for moving on those. Did they happen in a vacuum? No. There was a whole different council sitting here at the time who made decisions, in most cases unanimously who went on it. To watch a piece of property, well, basically getting destroyed just through lack of patents, lack of use, makes no sense. So you unwind it. That's how you get in, that's how you get out. Very common, very normal. Maybe not normal for the law so much. But we can make the same argument for, or for other property. That has nothing to do with this. Has everything to do with the property that was made and the decision that was made by this council or other councils to take a building, a series of buildings and move on. We have those coming very soon as well. Those are going to be a little bit more community based, maybe for our community services or gymnasium or something along those lines. Things that are also promised by the Georgia people in this council, to be able to deliver you as residents. It's a political decision. Doesn't necessarily mean that it's right, doesn't necessarily mean that it's wrong. It just simply says, make your decision, let the votes count where they are. If we don't have the votes, this contract will die and we'll spend another 90 days trying to put together another. Just that simple. Other questions? We will. We'll move on. So?
Uh, while we're still talking about that, council fellow also brought up the concern that the Old Town Mall project, uh, different council members for the past two years have been asking about the cost, the cost, the list of issues at the project for the council to understand where are we with that project along with the cost of it, uh, fixing that to where we can have it up running, um, when we, the company inside moving forward. And we still have not got the answer. The last time we had the answer, it was several lines of one point five million. And we broadly, on that report, it broadly sold the council the narrative on the issue of each building. It's not so, I'm not asking for the narrative go to how many nails are we going to put on the building, but to have, just like, eh, 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 the Tom and Seth, you have to is, need some update and fixing. What are we fixing? Are we fixing the plumbing? What's the problem with the plumbing? The toilet, the bathroom block, or whatever? Give the council a better picture of that. And upcoming, we going to have a council retreat. So my question is that, are we able to get that information during the retreat, the great opportunity that the council can have a chance to have a look at that so we can be better moving forward? Mr. Mayor, and the city manager?
Again, I comment it's easy to state, and you're right on a lot of formats, and I agree with you in terms of having some better information. Let's just pick a property. First off, it's not a shock what it looks like. It's looked pretty much the same way for fifteen years. You got a bridge, you have a series of roads. Again, information that may not be available to the general public, not because it's not available to you, you just don't have it in front of you. This has been divided into twenty-two lots. There's a number of different houses or projects over there in play. Um, let's just take one, let's just take the yellow house. So I could ask any of you, we have a shell of house, that's a structure, except. Please tell me, what would cost? Your first question that you would undoubtedly ask is, what are you gonna put in it? Because I don't have a private sector at this particular point telling you they have an interest in that property. There's no way anyone in this room can tell you exactly what would be in it. We know several things about the property. We, we know that it's probably not gonna be a restaurant. The second floor is not really built for putting lots of people in there. Um, but anything is possible. Which is why you take these properties apart as the interest is there. In other words, you have a restaurant that's interested in it or something along those lines. The rest of it, again, very good theater to ask you, what are you gonna do with it? You're gonna let it sit there until you find a lot of people to be able to help you move it forward. Then depending on who those people are, depending on their financials, what's their interest? Just like any other property that you have, whether it was a shopping center that you just purchased, you're not gonna renovate the shopping center without knowing who your tenants are. We can say it sat there for a long time, it has, but how long has it really been back in play? Just a couple of years. It has taken a while to get an economic development team on the ground, that's a fact. It has taken a while to get contractors, not contractors, designers, architects to design it. I'm not gonna be the first one to tell you that it's a little slow, that's fair. Until you have that designer, there's no way you can calculate what it literally is going to cost. You can't reach conclusions that you're reaching over time. Because in some cases, the building is new, it's just, again, good theater, but it's not the same thing as we've been able to report. And the people up at this house, they know that. And they've known it for a long time. So again, good theater. Better information? Always. Yeah. And even tonight, you'll see something on another portion of a building, a restaurant called Chetman, where we now have at least a completed set of designs. We do not have a completed cost analysis. And what does that mean? That means we're now taking a full set of plans, returning them over to a series of big living constructions for a living, and we're saying, what's it gonna cost? So we at least have an idea. And without that cost number, it's very difficult to go in and determine for these rates. Or what share is ours and what share might be, you know, as the tenant. And you're gonna see that again and again. Very common, doesn't matter whether it's our building or the private sector's building, it's gonna be very similar. So there's no magic to this. It's very boring and very basic.
So the mayor, uh, mayor, so what you tell, tell me is currently in progress. I was asking for the estimated cost to help the council understand the top, the, the, to have a general idea of how much.
And how's, how's?
The cost of the Old Town Mall for us to look at and to discuss in the retreat. I don't, still don't have that, I didn't hear that answer. Yeah, we will have it on, we're not able to. Probably have me to understand.
Well, we certainly could provide information, but it would have to be specific to whatever we're talking about. Things you have. I mean, you've got aerial fly-throughs, we've got three-dimensional maps. You know, but if a, if a map has a vacant lot on it, can anybody tell me exactly what building you're gonna put on? No difference than you could tell me how many square feet? You can't. What you can say is there's water power supply. That's good to say.
I would say it would be helpful to the council to have the lesson, the wrong thing is what needs to be fixed to the Old Town Mall building, each individual building, the associated project's cost. So we can look at the revenue coming, so we can learn of planning. Of course, it's not something written down that we cannot change. If, why are we doing that here, the investor come in and they interested and they wanted to open, then we turn the gear. And that's where the communication between the city, the econ director to the council is important. In the, in the budget meeting several months ago, I asked for the, the, the update, uh, purely to the council of the investor came in and what they were interested in on, um, in the city. For the council to be up to date, to understand what is that city attracting investor out there, we still have not been received it. So several pieces that we need to do, uh, so we can move it forward and we can be efficient. We need to understand the cost, so just like your own personal life. You understand what do we need to fix, what do we need to deal with, your plan, you have your five-minute plan, okay? This limited cash flow that we have in hand, how much do we want to spend, uh, in the fourth, second year? How, how long do we want to get this project done? So we can better moving. And another thing is that, um, I said this before, and I'm, for a whole year, and I'm saying this now. Even the council, the package, twenty-four hours ahead of the meeting or contract being given to the council five minutes before the meeting, there is no way a person can understand. And the council decision is not to lis, only listen to, not to be there to listen to the management. The management is the team to execute our direct council direction. Our job is to govern the budgets and govern the city movement to make sure we have the city moving to the direction that we desire. Uh, it would, it is very helpful to have the staff who are with us three minutes before the meeting or three minutes on each item, but it would be fair to, for each individual council to have that time to study, to be informed, to take note, to see if they have any question, and there they come to the question. Instead of having somebody telling us what is in three minutes and we have not had a chance to look on, uh, to, 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 to have the input to the contract if somebody seeing something that missing. That twenty-four hour won't give the council enough time of look and what we, we send it to us. We understand the general idea, but we don't know the detail. And there are so much, uh, there are many cases that that happened and put the city in a limbo situation. Just like with the two L, two electronics we have consigned, like we have. That project should have gotten through the steel bed. So when we have the changing in the cost of the project, we in a bushet that we in compliance with the state law, but we didn't, that we didn't use. We, but then, everything when it comes to the council is, is urgent. What is the urgency that is so urgent that the council only got this package a little bit more than twenty-four hours before the meeting and to offer? What, what is that urgency? What is the real urgency?
Okay, guys. All right, move on. Um, we have Georgia Municipal Association here tonight, and they're gonna make a brief presentation on hotel motel tax and the alcohol veterans tax. And for those of you who don't know, we certainly appreciate you coming out tonight, but as a city or in some cases a county, um, we're a member organization in the Georgia Municipal Association. And these guys do a lot of red work for us at the state legislative level when we're here. But basically, they hire a series of experts, um, to make it so that it's a little easier for small cities to be able to operate, and that way we're not out here operating, you know, as a small group, we're a larger group. And that's a pretty powerful, um, little group perhaps. So we do, we certainly appreciate y'all being out here. And for those of you who don't know, you know, the city is in taxi business, just like the state, and one of our top revenue producers is hotels, which is why we really want you to be able to have a good night stay here, um, come off of extra two thirty-three and then spend some of your money. We, we get a little percentage from that. And the same thing comes with alcohol. So on alcohol, you're gonna get an alcohol license, they're relatively expensive to get, you know, you're gonna pay that one-time fee, but then every time somebody pours a drink, you pay a little bit of an expense tax. So just like you would pay for, you know, some things, I guess, you don't really notice it, you know, somebody just charges you seven dollars per beer or whatever it is, but a portion of that comes back. The question comes down to, as a small city where you have seven hotels that have not been audited in a very, very long time, you know, so let's just say that you're the IRS, but you know I never checked. I'm not saying you're, you're fudging the numbers, I'm just saying it's a good idea to be, um, diligent. And those numbers reflect on your revenue stream as a city, um, as well. So those are both two categories, and that's in a nutshell, but these guys are gonna explain to us a lot better. Um, and, uh, looking forward, please, all right? And you probably picked up, we're not shy.
Neither am I, Mayor. Good afternoon. And I'm here with my colleague, Michael McPherson, he's actually a District Three rep, uh, in regards to, he covers the metro Atlanta area. Appreciate y'all having us here. Uh, as Elizabeth Taylor told her husband, I will keep y'all alone. Uh, to, to light it up, to see if he got it, yeah. So, uh, so here's a perspective, let me kind of give you my, uh, resume to help you understand why I'm, I'm before you. Uh, a former city manager, been in the trenches, uh, twenty-plus years and a local governor thirty, thirty years. One of the things that, that, uh, that now on this side of GMA that I have appreciated is that the value-added services in regards to what we do, uh, for cities. There's five hundred and thirty-seven cities that are in our membership, uh, and we appreciate that membership. We, we, we exist because of y'all, it's the, not the other way around. And there is, shall we say, value in, you know, the togetherness of these cities. And some of those services that we have been looking to provide are what we call member services to help you hopefully increase your revenue. Mayor almost gave my presentation, so I was gonna say, go ahead and finish it up there. But to increase your revenue to help you in regards to your potential revenue streams to help you fulfill the mission that y'all are here to do. So Hotel Motel is probably one of the ones that a lot of, you know, just be honest, there's not a lot of oversight in it. It is self-reported in regards to that, they have to report their revenues. Y'all may not have any hotels that are cash-based only, are eighty to ninety percent cash-based only, but there are ones out there. I'm working with the City of Albany right now, they are looking to do the Hotel Motel piece because they have about twenty hotels or so, maybe twenty, twenty-five, and they're having some problems with extended stay hotels. Okay? And, you know, we, we want everybody to play fair, we want everybody to do the right things. There is state law, there is laws that y'all would enact in regards to give guidance to how they need to comply. And obviously, it's not fair to some hotels who are doing the right things versus the ones that may not be doing the right things. So the Hotel Motel management piece, and I think y'all have that before you, uh, speaks about a overall approach to trying to help you deal with compliance, help you with the ordinance in regards to that you have on Hotel Motel. I think, how much y'all are collecting now, city manager, about five cents or six cents on Hotel Motel?
It is, on Hotel Motel, it's eight percent.
Eight percent, y'all are collecting the top eight percent. So y'all are using a portion of that to go towards a, uh, event, a capital project in that regard. So, so in that regard, you wanna make sure that you are getting or being remitted the amount that is due to the city in that regard. But what we have found in past, not thirty years, sometimes that doesn't happen because when people self-report, right? Hence the reason why we have IRS, right? We have to self-report what we get and they, they true us up or they send us a bill saying you owe this amount, right? Same principle it lies here. And it's not trying to target any one specific hotel, it's just trying to make sure that everybody complies in the appropriate manner, okay? And normally, when people comply in the, in the same manner, they operate more functionally, you have less issues in regards to that. I liken, I'm going back to the City of Albany, going back to the extended stay hotel issues. Once we put this, they put this in place, hopefully that will get everybody, you know, complying like they need to. And those that are not, those that are problematic for the police departments and for all those code enforcement, yada, 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 hopefully they would decide whether they want to stay in business or not in that regard. But it treats everybody fair across the board in that regard. In that, uh, provision, it also gives you the ability to, uh, let us collect that money from the proprietors, they do it electronically through ACH, they just transfer the money versus what they do now in regards to, I guess, they remit it to your city marshal or whatever, uh, business individuals. So that's the whole principle of that. The next one that we have that if y'all wanna consider is the one that just is on compliance. That's, that's just doing an audit or analysis of whether or not they're remitting their amount, it's worth that. And on both of those, we can go back as far as three years. Okay? I heard somebody say, yeah. Okay. So we can go back as far as three years. And then hopefully, we can get them to, you know, pay what they would have been, should have been remitting if they are in that situation. So that's the, that's the two pieces in regards to Hotel Motel, all right? And, uh, the alcohol, as the mayor mentioned, is by the, by the drink in regards to that. Y'all have seven of those established, eleven of those established initially. So obviously, that program does the same approach and it's done by the same group in regards to that. Uh, they would do that analysis based on the information that they would receive via your ordinance, they have to remit that to, to y'all in regards to that. So then they would pay the appropriate amount based on the per drink excise tax in regards to that. Uh, so once again, same premise on Hotel Motel, uh, you know, in the same vein. So I know your time is valuable, y'all had a lot of discussion, and let me say this, we want y'all to make an informed decision on this, a, as I've been in the trenches, city manager, I don't envy you, bless your heart, I understand, I understand those, you know, definitely want y'all to make sure that this is something that y'all feel of great value to y'all. Uh, we try not to be a hard sell in regards to any. Uh, we try not to be a hard sell in regards to anything that we do. We want it to be value-added to the city. We don't want it to be anything of a, of a hindrance or negative perspective as far as that. So I'll stop and answer any questions.
How many cities do you do this for?
Oh, in the hotel motel, we probably got, probably over a hundred or so right now, uh, that I'm aware of. But, you know, obviously, once again, uh, and, and Larry Hanson might slap me for saying this, you know, y'all have the choice to stay in it for a year or y'all can stay in it for longer than that, whichever y'all choose. It's not driven by any long-term commitment as far as that. So it's up to you. If you see value in continuing the contract going forward, so be it. But if you don't, understand.
Carol, ma'am, I would like to add something. After Carol introduced me earlier, I'm Michael McPherson, I am your District Three representative. Um, along with that, the, uh, the savings that, that you get in employee hours for the management piece is real. Uh, they're doing a lot of the paperwork that, that your staff is doing now, it's already produced for them. And so, um, there is value added there, um, that, that really, you know, it's hard to, hard to, hard to tell exactly how much you're spending there. But you are getting savings on multiple levels. The, uh, the excise tax is one that's imposed locally. And, and like Carol said, it is, it is up to you to make sure that it's being collected properly. DOR doesn't do it for you, the IRS doesn't do it for you. And that's why we put these services in place. But there's another thing about the hotel motel and the alcohol tax, uh, that I understand is true. We have lots of different services. Some are contracts, some are in-house. And cities may or may not, you know, choose to go forward with them after, after using them for a while. Neither of these services, I believe, I have never heard of anyone exiting either program, alcohol or hotel motel, because ease of use is there and, uh, and it's obvious that you give them a benefit when you return.
Questions for council, Ms. Dean?
Um, we're looking at, did you give you a contract on this or?
Yeah, it's, it's just a year-to-year contract. And, and let me add to what Michael said about the value added for the staff piece. You know, uh, being a city manager, one of the things that, you know, I always often sort of told my mayor council, we can't throw people at profits. Uh, we only have X and Y people, seventy percent, almost eight percent of your budget is people and benefits pretty much. Uh, so, you know, obviously trying to identify individuals to do this work and just them, them isolate them, that would be pretty costly in regards to that. And then trying to task this to a person that already had three or four other responsibilities, then you get dilution of the ability of that person to do the work. So once again, to that point, it adds that value that is a contractual cost, you know, no benefits, all that inclusive. It's, it's included upon that, as far as that. So thank you for having me.
One of the things that also applies is credibility. In other words, the city of law is not arbitrarily making up your numbers. It's a theoretical independent group who does this for a living every day. And they're reaching logical conclusions and they can have conversations with you. You guys don't mess it any more than a contract, it, it doesn't change. So having that ability to know that somebody's checking matters. And no one's saying that enough, but, you know.
And, and the mayor mentioned that, let me share that with your piece too. For, for me as a city manager, I, I definitely wanted a third party, having someone from the city go in. You know, obviously, you know, it's gonna create that tension between you and that proprietor in regards to that. So having a third party really works out a lot better in that regard, so.
And given that they're doing this, especially, you know, everybody's fine.
They're fine, yeah, everything's fine.
Other questions, Ms. Dean?
So for the, um, the hotel motel tax, the annual fee is nine hundred dollars per hotel property.
That's for the, that's for the total management, uh, contract. And then the
Compliance one.
Compliance one is, would be four hundred dollars per property, should you choose to go that route?
Five, five hundred.
No, five hundred, I'm sorry, I'm just kidding.
But the other, it's inclusive in the, you guys run the service, so that we don't have to worry about the other part.
You don't have to worry about it.
And the total cost of that would be sixty-three hundred dollars.
Sixty-three hundred, correct. And then on the alcohol piece, it's, it's around twelve thousand per year. Uh, that's looking at, you know, uh, based on how much, I can't remember how much per property. But, uh, but that's that figure over, as far as overall as far as that, so.
Other comments, uh, Ms. Tran?
Uh, I, I don't have a copy of the contract, so I don't know what we're doing, I understand the process. But I am not able to make the decision tonight based on, I don't have the information in front of me. I asked for the, for a copy of the contract, um, earlier today and I was told that we will be giving the contract at the meeting. So in, in fact, the concern that I raised earlier that the council is going to about voting for something, they don't have enough time to read, to understand, to read through the package.
Let's ask this question, is this the same contract that you used for Al Hunter and the cities? Pretty much fill in the blank?
Yeah.
Other questions, Mr. Qua?
Um, yeah.
One, one other thing, and I know we start to appreciate the presentation, is this doesn't happen in the back. But it's, you know, as we go through something like this, what we're looking for is, is better results. But we, we just landed a sixty-five million dollar project over at the mall. They're gonna build a ninety thousand seat arena, they're gonna build a number of other things. You've got to know that didn't happen by accident. In addition to that, you have to know that we are actively searching for a couple of additional hotels. Anyone who's ever went through a hotel study, whether that's Scoremont Trix, from the best in the industry, they're gonna do RevPAR, you're gonna hear that number a lot. And that basically says how much revenue are you producing per room? What is your occupancy rate? And at some point, you know, how much you make is per room. Like going in and doing something like this, it kind of gives us some better data and it makes them do what they're supposed to be doing. And to be honest, if you're cheating and you're dropping that number down, now you're gonna have to give it to me. Which means that might be the difference between getting a Fairfield and getting a Courtyard or getting a, a hotel that actually, you know, there's a lot of big, great stuff now in America that's pretty cool. Um, so it matters. It's not happening because we just stood there, it's, it's thought out. You have to do it to prove why, unless you want just anything. Now, we had a guy come in recently and pitched an extended stay hotel. And we said, no, just, just that simple. Why? You know, you just landed a nine thousand seat arena, why, why would, why would we dumb it down? Um, let's go for something that makes everybody proud. And my friends at the county as well as my friends at the, uh, the, the school board, when they're sitting in the room, you know the one question asking, we're not talking about educating your children at that point because it's an arena. They want a return on their investment. And where is the greatest place to get a return? And for those people who know up here, the Red Reshams or what was here before, it's Marlo George, the Niscan, that's a fact. And that's worth, let's just say that's worth a couple of million dollars to them, you'd be assured of that. Anyway, um, somebody wanna get a cup of coffee? We will, um, two minutes.
Could I have a question related to the, um, the item fund, uh, making half an hour? Uh, what is the full name of the guardian? Because I don't see that on the package. We sign, logo and legal, there are no address. What is the full legal name of this company?
Uh, the detailed scope of work was out with Gary Friends. Um, I'll, I'll get the address to you and email it to you. I don't have a
I appreciate that.
We're gonna go back into the work session, we only got a couple items left. But we're gonna have some brief discussions on the finance side, we all know that then, Public Works Director, talk to us a little bit about your landlord purchase case. We got to cut some grass and we needed to have it, there's only one in stock, so I just stole everybody.
Yep, you, uh, actually, I purchased it before he got here, but, uh, it's on Campbell's, he's familiar with the type of main, mower in the main. But we have one left to do, uh, supply chain issues, it was, they knocked the price off from twelve thousand something to the nine thousand, pretty early turn around.
Good evening, Mayor Council, like you said, they purchased the mower before I was, uh, quite arrived. Uh, I'm not sure if you can agree with it, but they did take a drastic discount on this mower. Uh, usually they are about twelve thousand, five hundred dollars. They purchased this mower for nine thousand nine hundred thirty. Uh, with grass cutting season coming up, we definitely need it. I haven't got to take a look at all of the equipment at Public Works yet, but I do know that we do need it. So this is a good purchase to make, get Public Works back up and going.
Questions?
No questions.
We, we, we want you to cut your grass.
Replacing or in addition to?
If you wanna have it.
Any, any questions for the Public Works Director, you've been here a block rate a day and a half. We'll, we'll reserve it for one day.
I've been here a couple of days.
Oh, don't worry.
Do you have any anxiety attacks?
Not yet, not yet.
Have you ever met Friday Lee with John yet?
Now, this, we're, we're gonna walk through, um, one of the other properties that we've done for a while. And, you know, this is, you know, what they call the dark space, the theme room, you know, a little four thousand square foot space, it's been sitting over there for a while. We've had many discussions, um, as to, you know, what to work on. We've got a private sector player, um, and this becomes basically, this is the visual that now matches the mechanical, electrical and some of the other things we're, it's playing on some, so. It, it has two floors in it and basically you got some outdoor seating. For those of you who remembered, you know, just last week or seven, or we showed the visual for the, the fly through of the new arena. The arena has more than one entrance and exit. So one of those, for those of you who know this property and you, you know where, you know, the corner piece is, that the secondary entrance is, it's used very much for the conference center. Literally, you know, you're about fifteen to twenty feet of a little bit of a driveway, basically, back where we got it. And then right after that with a series of building starts will be a secondary entrance, a major secondary entrance, um, to the on-site. So that pretty much takes that whole section and takes it all the way to the front part of the conference center, you know, in terms of what's completed. And you can now have a restaurant. Where we're at at this particular stage is to be able to do a cost analysis. Uh, you're out there pricing this out, saying in today's market, what is the cost to do that? Um, we, we brought in the, uh, the restaurant crew, one of us, both of us, and, and making sure their financials are still under work. And we're gonna be really close to being able to negotiate or start to negotiate. So this is now, that's the time that we start to close the elegant accordion, um, whether that's necessarily a public group or otherwise. Um, so that we can, you know, get close to a set, um, draft leases, um, kind of the terms of agreement. But until you have your final number in terms of what is the cost of this in the country, um, it's hard to have a negotiation, so.
Let me just say, that is friggin' awesome.
It is awesome.
Will any of the, the glass panels be doorways or none?
Um, on the, the left side, when you come into the conference center itself, there's a series of glass panels. That area will have a secondary door to it. It will have an ability to have access to the inside of the conference center, that will be locked on both sides. And it will also have access to the receiving kitchen that's already built in, again, locked on both sides. And this will allow us to, you know, we've got a restaurant here that, you know, the margins would be pretty low or high, I'm sorry, um, on additional surface. And there's yardage, there's staff yardage, there's, and if somebody comes in and just says they want, you know, a cheese plate, this is not gonna happen. Are you really happy with your expense of the actual, you know, food cost itself, the rest of it? So it gives us the ability to negotiate, to surprise them. You know, maybe they get a little bit of a margin, maybe we get a little bit of a better deal too. And I'm very comfortable that Lauren can handle that. He seems to be able to pull down some micks without pressing much of the paint. Um, so we really like it. But it's a visual and, you know, it matches the full set of plans that we have. I think the fire department is taking that last little look just to make sure the ingress and egress and all the different things matter. So we're close. And that's, uh, that's a year's worth of work right there, uh, to be able to make that happen, so a lot of partners doing that.
So Mayor, I'm sorry, like, you said it was, what, what am, how am I missing, what is upstairs?
Your upstairs is gonna be like a VIP area.
Okay, so I haven't seen a picture of that.
Oh, it's right there, right there, that side right there is where you're walking up. The left is basically, you know, kind of like a glass and shower, except that should blast in wine area. We do have, uh, there, there are many actually, and their selection goes pretty high, and others down there, you know, and all the other things. I doubt seriously you'd have yourself too many, if you're having out of the bottle of wine.
They might surprise, it'd be just
Mayor, you'll drink any of them.
But it, it, it has a lot to it. And for, for those, you know, people that have an interest in doing business for the city, we don't have ten thousand people being down at our door and basically locating any of our products, right? But we have advertised, you know, in the legal award, um, and both on behalf of the, you've heard the redevelopment authority, the development authority and the city of law, that just says, if you have that interest, you know, it's an open protocol, not whether it's residential properties or whether it's the commercial properties in the city, all you gotta do is submit and basically say you have an interest in something. And we sit down with people on a regular basis, whether it's our property or otherwise. You know, they just wanted yourself, and most people who would know it, you know, Dr. Kim did pick up, you know, that ten acres across from Casca, you know, that's twenty-eight thousand square feet of medical and that's five out parcel.
Is he still going with the one, one level?
He's two on, two on the left side and one on the right. Um, so we're already getting a little bit better against him behind those good discussions. And now we are actively looking for a couple of things in the city, um, relatively mid to upper grade hotel, um, to kind of work, um, in, in terms of different places, you know, where those are. And then five out parcel developments, which haven't been available to us since Stan Thomas built, you know, the original apartment outside. And to really be able to, uh, to hit on, obviously looking for, you know, full-service restaurants or the alcohol licenses, I think it's various return of your investment. You know, but we're, we're looking with Retail Leash Trapp, you know, tracking down different, as you want, so.
You're working with who, I'm sorry?
Well, Retail Leash Trapp, that's basically a software for an industry. And that basically says you can almost tell us anyone that you want to push it on the menu. But anyone you want, uh, so let's say a software. You tell us who you contacted, what they're looking for, Jordan, what, what some of the criteria they're looking for. A lot of criteria in some cases we won't be able to meet, um, but, you know, some of which we will. So this gives us an opportunity, if you have a favorite restaurant that you're reasonably sure will locate here or should locate here, uh, reach out to city hall, reach out to our kind of development team. And, uh, just give us an app, what we're looking for, because a lot of our search, we, we might still try to make you many people happy. I know the Whole Foods is a pretty big thing and I know some others, um, that might be a bit of a stretch, you know, right off the bat.
Trader Joe's, some, you know, smaller variation of it.
Yeah, we, we know we have the secondary space to be able to make it. And hopefully soon, um, you know, we had a, how many of those people? Um, you know, Michelle has some good contacts with George Power, with Beck with George Power, we have our, uh, our franchise check, which is about three percent more than last year, not, not huge enough, but at least it was a positive. And, you know, we're looking for possibly creating a, um, a visual, maybe a little fly through on the loop right now. Because now internally we got, so we may all not appreciate every tenant that's inside South Lake Mall and what they sell. That's gonna take a little time to get those leases and try to get a better click. As this city's designed, it's built, we now have to focus on loop work and the things beyond.
But I would like to say, as a person, and, and I'm not saying I'm the only one, but I've been to South Lake Mall all the time. The mix isn't as bad as, as people want you to think it is.
Yeah, I think the narrative spin should be that South Lake Mall has a zero percent vacancy rate? Is it a hundred percent occupied?
It's probably a three percent.
Yeah, I mean, the last time I heard it was like
It's relatively low, but it's, um,
In, in, in an era where the suburban
It needs to be more diverse as terms of product, but it is not a, a
It's not a zen mall, it's not wasteland, it's all in the, in the narrative and the spin. I mean, a three percent occupied vacancy rate, I mean, that's in the metro area, we're probably the, the top mall.
We're, we're
In, in the suburban, you know, within the suburban, we're not talking about the fifth and the last.
We, we know the Ruby Tuesday's, we've got full set plans in the arena for four, 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 four.
Correct.
So, you can start to see, you know.
What, what's that sports book called? I, I saw a banner of it that said.
Four, four.
And we have a full set plan.
Yeah, I think we've heard of that.
We don't have the visuals like this, but we got a very boring mechanical, electrical plan, and mostly that is, you know, but, you know, Mr. Collins was correct, you know, it's not perfect, you know, we're gonna box again some walls there a little bit, um, back for what you really got to have, um, because your, your city's gonna, gonna have, those five out parcels, but, let's just face it, in the real estate world, you know, it's kinda like, if somebody comes in and they could pay, you know, let's just use McDonald's as an example, you know, a burger, but you don't have a little burger, that's not on that quarter percent, so, if you get a burger, is that the best we want?
No.
You know, but, if you're the broker there, and somebody's already paid, you know, two and a half million dollars for, you know, a building, and give them fifteen thousand dollars a month, you can say, "Yes", because you got a number of them that you're, you have, and the land service personalization, which means you've already paid one point, I'm just gonna say myself, so, you pay a reasonable amount of money for the land, and you're not putting in coverage and drainage and all these other things, that's gonna cost a lot of money too, right now, you know, cash flow, you know, and, I was second in second, but, you've seen what's happening after that, whatever was happening last week, you know, market, market, yes, we can't have to mention that. I think Bakers paid a little more than five dollars down for these, so, probably that is that they're driving that piece of carpet there, um, but for the rest of us that are, you know, still on a good old-fashioned, you know, Petro, let's hope we don't keep up with it. Any other questions related to that, because this is pretty good, lucky, and we'll, we'll put it right in our development section, is the one, and we just gotta close it, Ms.
It's not related to that, have you seen the plans for what they're gonna do across from the archives yet?
I have.
Yes? Don't ask it.
I said, "Good."
It's good.
It's good that we're going to get better information, and from that better information, we'll get a real estate opportunity.
Oh, the politician speaks.
They could read this, yeah, but you could ask it a different one, you, you really believe that we will build fifteen point four story building? That's a little bit, um, nuts, and anybody who's been stressed.
I didn't hear everything that he said when they were doing that presentation, but.
It's a wonderful presentation, I mean, he's, he's good at marketing, you know, they're kind of racing, but for the same reason, it's not a competition, and it's fifteen fours, right? So, according to your start, the structure on that, you know, you have to have eighty seven centers, and we have a couple of shopping centers that are, are lower than a three-story building, um, that are not a hundred percent full now, that you can, but it's okay, now, if you're, you know, one of the bigger players, IBM or something, well, at least I'll go, you know, maybe, um, but as one, you know, I'm gonna go up the rest of them, I mean, you can see that I've got a great plan, and it could be efficient here, not really seeing a timeline yet, but, you know, you have, uh, a, a series of, you know, milestones that are being created over a period of the year, and that basically is, you know, producing, that additional data, and, you know, those, you know, technical, you know, where you're trying to add something, add more support, um, and, you know, at some point, we'll ultimately have to have a cost number as well, and I think when they do the feasibility studies, specifically for you and me, that's, uh, and we've had a good conversation with Ron Dotson as well, when he says, "We're not here by ourselves, and we're developing for your campaign," uh, we, we need that numbers, you know, come down a little bit more realistic, maybe what you're building on, we're both brothers, uh, some separate, little, little five months, you know, some a little corporation, which, uh, we have to, so, some of those we, we actually do, and that's a little more of those, but we actually see that, so, we appreciate your time, and I believe that's the last thing we had on the program, which is we kind of showed you what we got, and, uh, once we have a better exit, I'm gonna do more than we ever are possible, and, uh, then we'll have better answers where it all goes, we will, we'll, 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 and you're locked, and, uh, we're, 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 we're.